Good evening, everybody. It's Monday, January 8th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. We're at the Free Town Council on Aging. This meeting will be on Zoom as well as in person, so because of that, I will read Governor Haley's order. This meeting will be available for in-person attendance and on Zoom. On March 29th, 2023, Governor Haley signed into law Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, which, among other things, extends the expiration of the provisions pertaining to the open meeting law to March 31st, 2025. Specifically, this extension allows public bodies to continue holding meetings remotely without a quorum of the public body physically present at a meeting location and to provide adequate alternative access to remote meetings. This meeting of the Free Town Board of Selectmen will be conducted in person as well as via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public can be found in the town of Free Town's website, freetownma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: downloading Zoom and entering the meeting ID below, calling the number listed below and entering in the meeting ID listed below, or by going to the link and entering in the meeting ID listed below. Although in-person attendance is available for this meeting, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that you're unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post the town's website and YouTube channel, audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Also, I will open the meetings. I don't think I actually officially did that. Sorry, are we good? Yeah, so we will be going into executive session and then back into open session. And we will be going into executive session for the following reasons. Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do. I come reverse Town of Free Town. And number two, Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the Free Town Police Union, Local 262 Laiana Clerical Union, because an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body and the chair so declares, and I do. Are we good, Glenn? Do I need to do anything?
No, you said it was recorded and it's being on YouTube.
Perfect, just making sure.
Just your motion to go into executive session.
So I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session?
Motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, we're now in executive session. We are now back in open session. So, Gen item 3, this is discussion and vote on whether to approve or not releasing executive session minutes from 12:18, 2023.
Motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Lobes?
Yes.
No.
No, Selectman Matthews.
Yes.
I'm just giving everybody a new name tonight, sorry.
Alright, so Gen item 4, discussion whether to approve the open session minutes from 12:18, 2023. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session minutes from 12:18, 2023.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. So, Gen item 5, we're gonna pass on that. We're gonna wait, Selectman Lobes cannot be here tonight, so we're gonna wait for him to have that discussion.
Yes.
And now, Gen item 6, presentation of the Town Clerk, Chief Election Official regarding the annual town election, so show.
Good evening, I'm Cheryl Estrella, Town Clerk. I just want to thank the Board of Selectmen and Town Administration for allowing me to speak tonight. So, we're just here today to put a presentation together regarding the 2024 Annual Town Election to bring everyone in the public up to speed and to some public outreach. As you know, the annual town election is scheduled for Monday, April 1st, 2024. We have a list of positions that were made available when we call for the election. Those have been posted online. All this information is posted on our elections website under the annual town election, along with terms there. Just wanted to go over the voter registration deadline. So, the Office of the Town Clerk and Board of Registitors is gonna be open until 5:00 PM on Friday, March 22nd, in order to facilitate and to register to vote any new voters in town. So, existing voters, they don't need to re-register to vote. If you're an existing voter, you do not need to re-register. This is just for new voters only. There's two ways to register to vote. You can do it in person, or you can do it online at votenma.com. That's a wonderful website presented by the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office. We'll refer to that website quite frequently. There's a lot of little tabs on there that you can use to track your ballots, track your status, change your status, update your registration. The state has spent a lot of time and money in updating that, so it's a one-stop shop. So, we can go on to the next one. So, as you know, the nomination papers are available at the Office of the Town Clerk for all the positions. We require 40 certifiable signatures of Free Town registered voters for all positions, with the exception of the Regional School Committee. The Regional School Committee is 50 signatures. The deadline to obtain the papers is gonna be 5:00 PM on Thursday, February 8th. So, any town resident who is also a registered voter, who would like to take out nomination papers, they may do so up until 5:00 PM on that Thursday, February 8th. And then those papers would have to be returned by 5:00 PM on February 12th. We'll have some time after that in order to certify those signatures, but as long as we have them in signatures certified, those candidates will be notified and their names will appear on the ballot. So, nomination papers, again, who is eligible? If you're a current resident of the Town of Free Town and you are also a registered voter, you are able to pull out nomination papers. So, we encourage folks to do so. Again, the key dates to remember. So, as always, the nomination papers are always available the day we return from the holiday break. This year was Tuesday, January 2nd. And the last day to obtain those nomination papers will be February 8th, and the last day to return would be February 12th. Vote by mail. So, as you know, you've heard me come before you several times regarding the Votes Act and vote by mail. Vote by mail is here to stay. It was signed into law. It was approved June 21st of 2022 and went into effect July 21st of 2022. Vote by mail is permanent for all state and general elections. Last year, I came before the Board after meeting with the Board of Registitors in regards to vote by mail for local town elections. That's the only one where we have some type of a leeway that we can either choose to vote by mail for locals or not. Last year, because it was the only election that the town had, there was no other state or general elections, all of the costs associated with vote by mail, that's the notifying, the postcards, the three ballots per voter, all of that would be incurred by the town, the postage. So, we opted as a cost-saving measure not to have that. This year, it's gonna work a little differently. After speaking with the Board of Registitors, and we all came to the same consensus. Because the state, it's mandated the vote by mail, the state will be sending out vote by mail postcards. Those don't come from me. They come from the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office. They actually should be hitting homes on or around January 20th. And those postcards will list all of the state and general elections. So, you have the presidential primary, March 5th. You have the September state primary, September 3rd, they just voted on that date, as well as the presidential election in November. So, when the voter indicates they want ballots for all elections, they'll automatically be put on the list and receive those vote by mail ballots. However, we do have the April local town election in there. And the Board of Registitors, and I feel the same way, that it's gonna be too much of a confusion that you now have vote by mail for certain ones and for certain elections not. Where the state is gonna be covering most of the cost in regards to postage and those postcards and the envelopes and the postage to return those, we figured it'd be easy and less confusion for the voter to just piggyback on the state, because they're gonna be paying for most of that. We would just incur most of the charges with the three ballots per person, per voter. So, we will have vote by mail for the annual local town election, just to make it less confusing for the voters. So, here's an example of the application postcards that the state is gonna be sending out. As you can see to the right in the red, it says, "Primary Ballot." If you are enrolled in the, there's blank Xs there showing whether it be these three parties actually. There's the Democratic, Republican, and the Libertarian Party. If you are enrolled in one of those parties, you would automatically receive that ballot, unless you change your party status prior to that March 22nd final voter registration. If you're in the system for that party, that's the ballot you will receive. So, we ask voters, if they're interested, to mark the postcards accordingly as to which ballots they'd like, because you don't have to receive a vote by mail ballot for all elections. Some people choose to not participate in the primary, but you indicate which ones you want, and you'll be automatically sent that vote by mail ballot when they become available. We ask that you sign and date the postcard and then return it to our office. Now, there is a second version of that vote by mail application postcard. So, that is for the un-enrolled voters. Now, when I say un-enrolled, that doesn't mean folks who are not registered to vote. For lack of a better term, it's the undeclared, not registered in a party. So, they are enrolled voters, they're just undeclared. So, at that point, which about 80% of the voters are, at that point, voters can choose, they have the ability to choose which party ballot they would like. Once they've chosen a party ballot for those specific primary elections, the March and September, it does not change your status. You don't become automatically enrolled into those parties like it was many moons ago, many years ago. You still remain un-enrolled or undeclared. It's the old independent, but you get to choose your party ballot at the primaries. So, those are the two versions of the application postcards that they will be receiving. Again, those will be sent directly by the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office. If you do not respond to that first mailing, which some folks choose not to opt into vote by mail, which is absolutely fine, we just wanna make you aware that you will receive another postcard come the September primary. The state will send another round of postcards, and then again, for the November election, for every registered voter. If you don't respond to the card, you will be getting postcards. They don't come from my office. They come from the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office. The only way to stop those postcards is if you apply to vote by mail. That was written into the new law. If you don't wanna wait for the postcards and you want to submit an application, we have the application online on our website. That's that third image there on the right. Or, as I explained earlier, the votenma.com website. That's that all-inclusive website from the Secretary of the Commonwealth's Office that you just toggle on those little radio buttons, and it gets you right to where you need to go. So, vote by mail, returning your ballot. So, the mail ballots will include a postage prepaid return envelope. So, voters do not have to return their ballot with a stamp on it, but just simply as walking to the end of your driveway and putting it in your mailbox and putting a little red flag up. You can return it in person at my office. You can utilize the white Dropbox that's in front of Town Hall. That's a Dropbox specific for ballots only. No other mail go in there. And again, the deadline to return those ballots. Those ballots have to be received by my office by 8:00 on Election Day. Any election, vote by mail is 8:00 PM on the Election Day. That is the deadline. You have to have them in hand. Now, with that being said, when you drop off the ballot, we do have to go into the state system and update the status of your ballot. So, a lot of folks do like to utilize that votenma.com and Track My Ballot. So, when you wanna see, has your ballot been returned? Has it been processed? Was it declined? Was it returned? Is it being processed? All of that information on that Track My Ballot radio button on that votenma.com website, that comes from our office. We do that all manually. So, it's a great way for voters to see if we actually got their ballot and where it is in the process. Important notes about Election Day. You cannot return your ballot to the polling location on Election Day. Everything is checks and balances. We cannot have any extra ballots at the polling locations. So, that is just a reminder that you have to either mail it in or drop it off in person.
You also cannot take your ballot from the voting booth and leave with it, right?
No, 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 no. They have to be cast. Yeah, everything's gotta balance, checks and balances at the end. So, we've got your wardens and your clerks, and you know, we have each of the election workers. They have their certain job duties, and they know what to look out for to ensure that every ballot is counted for all elections. If you, if a voter has returned a vote by mail ballot, or they voted early in person at any of the elections, they are not permitted to appear in person on Election Day, because they'll be casting their vote early. Again, key dates for vote by mail. Monday, March 25th, 2024 at 5:00 PM. Again, our office is open. This is the last day and hour to apply for a vote by mail ballot. So, you wanna make sure that you get those applications, either the postcards or the downloadable applications, to our office by that deadline, because we have to ensure that it's gonna go out to you in a timely fashion and returned back to us. And again, 8:00 PM on Election Day, April 1st. That is the last day and hour to return the vote by mail ballots to our office.
Just to stress, these deadlines are just for the annual town election. The presidential primary, a different set of deadlines.
So, we'll be go, we'll appear in front of you just as public outreach to try to get the information out to voters for each and every election. The laws have changed, and it's a lot of information, and there's a lot of misinformation that's out there. So, we like to just clear the air and just do it as elections come up. But as this is gonna, we're talking about the annual town election. I do understand that the March primaries before that. We will come again before you, before the March primary, just to review some bullet points. But the annual town election, this is what this is referring to.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, if you vote in person, I mean, if you vote by mail, and then you decide you wanna change your vote, already mailed it. That's it. Once you vote, whatever way you choose to vote, that's it, one and done.
If you've voted and we have already received your ballot, it's done. So, with all the updates and training, as you know, with the popads, that all comes up. That all comes up electronically. So, it's easy and efficient.
That was what I was gonna ask, is, okay, I go and vote and send in an early ballot by mail. Does it show the election workers that I already voted?
Yep.
And I figured so, but I wanted...
So, there's always some confusion where folks apply for a vote by mail ballot, but they haven't returned it, or they haven't made the decision, and they said, you know what? I'm gonna decide to go on Election Day. If your ballot has not been returned to our office, the popads, the voter check-in will show that you've requested a ballot, but we have not received it, and it has not been processed yet. So, you'll be then told that that would be the only ballot that would count. If you had mailed it and we hadn't received it back yet, and you decided to show up on Election Day, that first ballot that we get back, whether it be that you voted in person that day or tried to drop it off after you voted, only one ballot's gonna count.
Thank you for the...
There are checks, yeah, there are checks and balances in place. It's a lot of manual work. It's, you know, we try to, try to get the information out there to let people know so that they can feel confident that the elections are fair and equal, so. Okay, and then at a meeting earlier today of the Board of Registitors, the Board of Registitors determined that the town will not be opting into in-person early voting for the 2024 Annual Town Election. Again, this is another cost incurred to the town. So, you have payroll, you have election workers who are out there, you have extra ballots. The numbers have shown, while in-person is a great benefit with the option to, for vote by mail and Election Day, it's just cost prohibitive to have in-person early voting with all the numerous ways that you can vote. So, this year, we will not be having in-person early voting. Again, just to reiterate, the annual town election's gonna be held Monday, April 1st, 2024. The polls are open from 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. All precincts, precincts 1, 2, and 3, all vote at the Free Town Elementary School utilizing the gymnasium. The last election we had, we had the same emergency or exit door, that F-10 door at the rear of the school. I know that's a little different. That's gonna be the same entrance and exit. So, it's gonna be the same as the November election. So, the parking is normal where it is. You see Memorial Drive on your bottom. And then to your right, you have Bullock Road. You're gonna utilize the back entrance and that first door right there on the left, enter and exit through those doors where it has the ADA accessible entryway. We will have signage out there directing voters, but that will be the entrance and exit until further notice.
Do you know if the kids are gonna be in school that day?
So, for Free Town Elementary School, for the annual town election in April, they are having a half-day. Dismissal is gonna be at 12:00 PM. However, the pickup, the children's pickup will not be at that area. So, it's gonna be utilized in the third-grade hallway and another entrance. Parents will be parking in that parking lot and walking up to go pick up their students and their children, but they will not be picking up at those doors. When it comes for the March primary, but I will come again before you again, but just be aware that school is closed on that day in March. Alright, and just our contact information. Again, we're here to serve, so if anyone has any questions and they wanna give our office a call or send us an email, we have a dedicated elections email box, and we're here if you folks have any questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
Okay, so I think Gen item 7 is discussion on budget strategies for FY '25. We're gonna wait until Margaret. Okay, so we'll come back to that. And I guess that kinda goes with 8 as well.
Yeah, 7 and 8 is more.
But we can go into Gen item 9, which is discussion of whether to adopt the IRS increase in mileage rate of 67 cents per mile effective 1/2024, 6/30 through 6/30, 2024? Not much of a choice here, dude? Okay, so, without, I entertain a motion to adopt the IRS increase in mileage rate.
Motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Gen item 10 is the senior work-off list from the Council on Aging Director for 2024. And these are, you know, we're not gonna name the folks on the list. I know the previous year, last year, we kinda had an issue where we got those in late. This year, are we on time?
I think so.
Yeah.
Right? January 1, they're effective, so yeah.
Alright, ask any questions or concerns on that?
No.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the senior work-off list from the Council on Aging Director for 2024.
Motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Gen item 11, discussion of whether to approve the agreement between the Town of Lakeville, sorry, and the Town of Free Town for boarding and adoption of dogs relinquished by the Free Town Animal Control Officer. And so, I know it's a, there's some additional fees this year.
A $250 capital fee. I'm not really sure what kind of...
Yeah, just, I think it's to cover some of the, the cost of, yeah, upgrading the facilities there. And then 20, and we should try to find it, $25 a day, I would say.
Yeah.
Yep.
That's the same as last year.
Okay.
The only difference is the $250 capital.
Yeah, for one time.
Per year, yeah. Per contract. The state came in last year to the shelter, and they have certain requirements that has to be done. You have to have hot water, you have to have heat, you have to have air conditioning, you have to have drainage. And the shelter's old, so it needed some improvement. So, it's not just Free Town. They board for seven other towns. So, every town is gonna, they are asking to help contribute to that upkeep since our dogs are there.
Yeah. How many dogs do we have generally?
It's hard to say. Right now, there's three of our dogs there.
Okay.
And one in Foster.
Gotcha.
I wanted to ask you, we do have, we do have a kennel at the transfer station. We don't use it. I've never seen it, so feel free to update me on what that looks like or what it, but why we don't use it.
There's three, I'm sorry, four. Wait a minute, it's been a while. I think there's four kennels. It needs a lot of work. The building is really old. It was a building, from my understanding, that used to be an old police department, and they moved it to the transfer station.
Okay, so it hasn't been used in a long time, then?
I use it for storage. I don't know what the transfer station would go. I have a lot of crates that people donate.
But you've been here for 12 years, 12 years? You have never used it? I was like...
The very beginning, when I was actually part-time, and that was the, we did use it for a couple of dogs, yeah.
Now, if we were to use it, then what? Somebody has to staff it? Like, you have to staff it? You have to be out there to feed the dogs and take care of them?
Yeah, because every day, they have to be let out. They stay in at night. There's gelatine doors and there's kennels on the outside, wire kennels. But they have to be, you know, some of them are, I have a dog that's there right now at the shelter that needs medication for a second, so.
Just, like I said, I didn't even know we had one, so I hadn't seen it.
Yeah, and if we had, like, maybe it makes sense to do that if you had a lot more dogs, but I think we're not right now.
Honestly, I don't think it warrants.
Yeah.
I don't get that many. It comes and goes, like, right now, there's four total. Once those are either claimed, or, which they're not gonna be, they'll be adopted out. You know, it could be a couple of weeks, it could be whatever, before the next one. So, we're pretty good at getting them home. I'll have loose dogs, but we find the owners. Unfortunately, right now, a lot of being dumped.
Really?
It's too bad.
It's horrible.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, they're a great facility, right? So, I don't think that what they're asking for is any hard ask. And it's nice to hear that they're kind of dividing it out, the cost, right?
Right, yeah.
I think everyone's not them incurring it more so, or saying everyone's gonna allocate it based on the amount of dogs they put there.
Right, so like, one of the...
It's a short amount of money.
Exactly. One of the towns is where, and they are utilized all the time. They, they're a lot bigger than Free Town is as well. But they are making it so that everybody pays the same. It's not, it doesn't go by usage.
So, we good? Any other questions or concerns? Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the Town of Lakeville and Town of Free Town for boarding and adoption of dogs relinquished by the Free Town Animal Control Officer.
Motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, so I'll jump back now. Margaret's here.
Oh, yeah, she is.
Alright.
Sorry.
Alright, so this is Gen item 7, which is discussion on budget strategies for FY '25. Where do we start?
Go over there.
Yeah, right next to the man.
I need place cards.
Alright, so just to, to update you. Last year, there was a lot of raising requests that were all over the place. It was a, kinda like a market adjustment kind of thing. And we just thought, as, as a finance committee, we talked about it, and we thought, maybe if, if the Personnel Board wanted to kinda give a suggested guideline for raises. So, we thought, as I put in my letter, 2% to 3% seemed reasonable. Up to you. That's our recommendation. That was our thoughts.
Okay. Yeah.
So, you wanna go first?
You go.
Alright, so I am all for 2% to 3%. I just don't like blanketing a percentage, and here's why. Because if I say that I'm gonna give everyone in that 2% to 3% range, and it was just another year for me, and then Selectman Matthews went and did a whole bunch of stuff and, you know, became a lot more certified or did something that really took them to the next level, I think they deserve more. And I know you understand that, but I feel like I have to say it, because I just don't wanna be like, oh, yeah, 2% to 3%, that's it, you know?
No, no, no. We're not saying raises only there. We're saying that's a guideline. Obviously, anybody can ask for anything they want.
Yeah, yeah.
But our thought is, is if there is a suggested guideline, and somebody wanted to request anything higher than that, say, more certifications, job expanded, whatever, then that's fine, but just in, in general kind of thing.
Yeah.
If, if you wanted to work outside that guideline, there would have to be defense.
That makes sense, too.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, and I don't wanna speak for every individual department or person. In some cases, you know, we, we don't even determine what they get, right?
Right.
The town determines ultimately what they get. But I think we stepped up to the plate with certain things last year and really tried to level the playing field of things that have happened in the past. And I'm not gonna say everyone's right where they wanna be, but I'm hopeful that with after last year, that things are a lot better than they were before. And I'm not saying that about every individual, so.
Yeah, I mean, that makes sense to me. I mean, unfortunately, Selectman Lobes not here to, you know, to do a vote on this necessarily. I mean, we can still do that.
So, what will happen is, I will be sending out, as soon as I get the budgets over from Matt, I will be, I add a cover letter to it with sort of the, in the recommendations, like, okay, here's the things. Keep your budgets level funded.
recommendations, like, okay, here's the things, keep your budgets level funded, um, incorporate a two percent raise, raises, that's kind of what I do. Of course, each department develops their own budget and brings it, and we, we sit with them and go over it, ask questions, sometimes we answer questions so they can finish their budgets, um, so that's the guidance that I was looking for, just so I can also put it in the letter, I have Vincom, this Sleckman are agreeance with it, that's what the letter will say, keep the, you know, the raises at two percent, and like I said, that doesn't mean that's what they come in with. They come in with them, but they have, they'll know that that's the recommendations.
And that, that, I guess that's why I keep saying this stuff, is it's like us sitting here saying things and what'll actually happen, it can be too separate.
Yeah, but I think it's just set in its tone, to a certain degree, I mean, I, I, I have an appreciation for that. Um, you know, and, alright, so any other discussion on that specifically, or should we vote on jet item eight?
I, I don't have anything else, no.
That's it, I mean, obviously, we're, we have no idea where the school's gonna come in.
Yeah, there's so many unknowns right now, I feel like.
We're so early in the process, although it's quickly coming.
Yeah.
Um, but, yeah, so.
There is a lot of scary stuff in the near future, I feel.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is a lot of unknowns right now, BP, I, you know, we know we're a member, we know we're gonna be responsible, but we have no baseline to go by, so I'm gonna be reaching out to them to see if they can at least give me some guidelines to work with, so we can put that number in our budgets, but they won't have their budget ready for quite some time, so it's gonna be difficult, but we're gonna work on that as we always do. Um, and the state is really talking about decline, a decline in their, um, income, which concerns me in that they may change the amount that they fund, right, so if they're funding transportation at the school level at ninety percent, and they decide to change it to seventy percent, the town has to make up that difference. That's a big number, so there's a lot of concerns right now, a lot of uncertainty in the, in the, um, and what I'm hearing from the state, so.
Alright, so I guess with that, so I'll entertain a motion, um, to, you know, line up with the finance committee and uh recommend raises for F Y twenty five in the two to three percent range.
Um, motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, we good there? Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret.
Alright, now I'm gonna jump back down to jet item twelve. So this is, uh, some class two motor vehicle license renewals, so we have, um, Mark eight H Bullock, D B H Triple A Auto Sales, and D P F Enterprises Inc. And then they have all their required paperwork in there. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those two class two motor vehicle license renewals.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Uh, we have a couple snowplow applications now. So, we have Matthew Denal, Russell Sherman, and Chris Bernier, um, this is for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four season. All got their information in, everything's good?
Correct.
Any questions or concerns?
No.
Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve those three snowplow applications for the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm sorry, Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. We must be, I mean, I feel like we're getting a decent amount of snowplow, snowplow drivers this year.
I think he's still down, we just had, one of these, I think, here has six trucks, right?
Right.
Yeah, so that will help a lot, too.
Shout out to Chuck and his team because another pretty uneventful storm as far as people complaining and everyone was happy, so.
I, I had to drive seven hours yesterday through the whole storm, and, uh, some, some places did not have very good roads. Alright, um, jet item fourteen, this is discussion of vote whether or not to use twenty five thousand dollars of ARPA funds to do a feasibility study on the old schoolhouse building for potential uses. And I guess my take on this is I think this is a great use of those ARPA funds, I know we have a lot of, uh, space issues right now, we have that beautiful building sitting there, um, I know it's not a, uh, not gonna solve all our problems, doesn't solve our park, parking problems, it's still, you know, obviously it's gonna be expensive, but, um, I think this is a step in the right direction, at least is my, my take on potentially utilizing that and, and, you know, another, you know, it's gonna be a temporary solution, but I think it will help, I'm not sure you, anything else on that?
I will say that I've never been, I've always screamed about not wanting to be the person to put a Band-Aid on an issue and just fixing it right. But as we've learned, that building, buildings, doing anything with buildings takes a lot of time, so this is going to be the fastest solution to fixing an immediate problem.
Yeah.
Um, and it will allow the building to be used, right now it's just sitting there.
Yeah.
Used, so, and it fixes stuff.
Yeah, 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 my other, like, so I think we all know that we knew, we do need a new town hall su- sooner rather than later, right, but that's, we, we also understand the uphill battle it is to, to achieve that. Um, so like, and I don't think they'll ever have like too much, you know, space for, for the town to utilize, so even if we go ahead and build a new town hall, you know, the old town hall will be utilized for something, and th- those spaces can also be utilized for, you know, community move, like, meeting groups or rooms, or, you know, I'm sure we'll find plenty of, of, uh, things to do in those spaces, so.
I think we have someone back there who'd like to say something?
Yeah, oh, yeah, please, come on up.
I was gonna bring you up.
Jimmy and I talked, we've talked several times, um, initially, uh, you know, it was a schoolhouse and then it was a CD, you know, scout house and so forth. Uh, and then it was vacant, you know, she was for cultural council and they had the room on the north side and the floor was, um, finished and painted and inside windows were opened up and so forth, and we used to have workshops, yeah, and then that went by the wayside. Um, and as you know, there was a big hole in the, um, roof, and this is what the schoolhouse looked like until two thousand ten, when we obtained a grant, uh, an emergency grant, because uh, when I applied for the first grant and they saw the pictures, they said, you know, you're in the wrong department, and so that we get an emergency grant and the town matched it, and it was a big hole on the south side, the water was pouring in on the hardwood floor and did a lot of damage. And there were folks who really wanted it torn down, and so that was part of why they were ignoring it, no matter how many times the historic commission went before them, wanted tops, wanted what they were playing, uh, finds growing in the windows and so forth. So with this, that was the beginning, and we got the roof, we got the cupola, we got the new stair, the stairway is the original stairway except for the top part, and, um, those are all, um, mahogany. People keep saying to me, oh, why don't you paint those, why don't you, they're not ever supposed to be painted, but anyway, at that point, and the cellar was part dirt and it was some, part of it was cement, and there were stairs to go down, and any child that grew up in town would always jump over the section in the middle where the door was because we were told, there were ghosts though, so of course, and that's, but you had to jump to get across, and you still do. Uh, the stairway is going, the, so we wanted, first of all, to save it, but we wanted it to be useful and not just to be an empty historic building.
Yeah.
And right then, it was for a space for town hall. Whether it was gonna be storage space, office space, but that was, that was the goal, and so, um, that we were fortunate to get the basement, you know, cleaned up, fixed up, and used for archives, and so that's you know, things are drier there, then, you know, and that's, so the building is being used. Upstairs, a lot of work has been done structurally, uh, there's more to be done. And now that it's painted, and we just finished the windows with money that we had obtained a couple of years ago, and, um, with a different building inspector and so forth, so we finally got, all the windows have been, um, re-glazed and painted inside and outside and are working, open and closed. Uh, so that's done, the roof's done, um, and one side is gutted, so we won't, they won't have to go into that because there are bare walls and, um, the floor has been taken up that was there, and the subfloor is down uh, because of the rock. Our goal was to have it used for some form of government in town and to be utilized and not to see it go by the wayside. There is a preservation restriction on it, so it cannot be just torn down. And the selectmen signed that, um, when we got the grant, and that was kind of the, uh, one of the criteria, when you do get a grant um, like that from, um, Mass Historic. So, I would support you one hundred percent, and Deb knows that, to see it used, and everybody on the historic, past members, present members would be supportive to see something done, to have it utilized. Um, there was a doorway in the back, and there's only one way in and out unless you jump across, you know, the fence at the top. Um, but, and I was looking, trying to look through some of my, um, notes and so forth, and someone said to me, it was Mary McInbor, and the McInbors, it would be, um, Chuck's aunt, said I was the last first grade class there, and my sister was next door because seventh and eighth grade, and she was the last eighth grade class there. Uh, when it closed, and then Free Town Elementary opened up in nineteen fifty. Uh, so there's a lot of history, and I've been trying to save things, people have sent me newspaper clippings through the years from classes and so forth, so we could have some sort of a display out in the through alcove and so forth, but, uh, we'd be very, very supportive of helping to, to do, see if we can get funds to do things with it, but, um, and parking I know was a problem, but you have a certain number of cars there now, and there's some cars you're gonna have, plus, you know, plus additional people. And there are always ways to work around. If we get the full corner straight now, we'll have parking in four corners, might be safe then, you know? We get the roundabout or whatever we wanna get, so, just, I just wanted you to know that you have, uh, have our support.
Thank you, and that was my first question.
Yeah.
Because obviously, you know, there is a lot of, uh, people who hold that building near and dear to them, and wanna make sure.
I didn't get to go to school there. Someone said, oh, it's because you were just, I said, no, I didn't go to school there.
Yeah, and well, obviously, you know, there'll be close coordination between, you know, your team and, and, and however we go about actually this, but first, I mean, first step is, before we get ahead of ourselves, you know, hopefully this feasibility study comes back and says it's something we can do, right, I wanna, you know, I wanna manage expectations, I'm, but I'm, I'm hopeful that, you know, there's already been, you guys done a lot of work on that building, and it, it only makes sense to keep that work going forward, so.
Yeah, and it, I mean, I, I think structurally in Deb's, you know, been a builder, so she, she can look at it from her, that point, but, um, you know, at the time, we, we had actually, um, we met once a week with the, with the architect and the build, the personal got the job, and it was a learning experience, and but we, and when it came to the cupola, I just said, we can't, it can't come down, because you know, once it comes down, we'll never get it back up and with the funding and so forth in today's, so that's why it's still there, and it's been altered through the years, if you look at, um, different pictures. Um, and there was a weather vane on there that disappeared, like the one at the, um, bandstand. Uh, we don't know how, but, someone said, but I didn't even hear a helicopter, so somebody had a long toll ladder. But I think it would be great to have, have some of that, you know?
Possible.
Yeah, possible in town, and, uh, you know, and I, w- we don't know what's gonna happen with the library. Uh, that might be another space someday, or.
Yeah.
You know, so if, if they can, down the road, um.
Recording in progress.
So.
Alright.
Anyway, so, anyway, that's all.
I appreciate it, Cheryl, do you have something on this topic?
Actually, I just wanted to add, and I wanna thank Mary for that, um, thorough historic narrative of the history of the building, I just wanted to, um, just notify you, um, currently the basement is partially finished, and it's got record archives in it.
Yes.
Um, it is cemented, it is not insulated, there is a leak that comes in through the corner office, uh, through the corner of the building, uh, which has added to mold, um, on those records, um, there is a there's been a rodents in the building that's been addressed at one form, uh, at one point in time or another, um, but I just wanted to, uh, remind you that there was an assessment done back in the fall of twenty twenty one, I believe Trevor, you were on the board at that point. Um, so whatever feasibility study is done that, where you make sure that if the records are posted, that we work in conjunction with the state, um, to get those records where they need to be.
Yeah.
And stored, um, appropriately. That's the last thing I want to happen, is to have those archived records, um, damaged or destroyed, especially under my watch.
Hundred percent, yeah, and I think that's, you're part of the feasibility study too, right? The building as a whole needs to be. No, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that, I wasn't, we were, we were part of, uh, actually, uh, in the construction of everything in uh, to create the archives at that time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think many people were, to be honest with you, I think it was just something that all of a sudden had out in one day.
Except for the sm- floor, that was the only thing. I forgot about that, but then it was so, good luck, I hope.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
I have one suggestion, because I was at the police station, isn't it possible to have the agendas posted outside the community room? Because I didn't realize it was here, and when I went to the front window, police officer just went, and he did not know, oh, I don't know where the meetings are, or, I said, well, don't you have a posting or anything? Couldn't tell me anything, so I think we need to have a posting.
Recording in progress.
Okay, let me see.
Yeah, I'm sure that's something you can figure out, yeah.
To post it, so, because I walked in on somebody else's meeting.
Yeah, I, I actually asked anyone over there myself.
They didn't tell me where to go. But that would, it would be helpful, I would think the police officer or attorney would need to know.
Yeah. Okay.
Dispatch was no idea.
Yeah, yeah, they probably. Alright, so with that, I'll entertain a motion, um, to utilize the twenty five thousand dollars of ARPA funds to do a feasibility study on the old schoolhouse building for potential uses.
Motion made.
All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, and then jet item fifteen, this is discussion of vote whether to add a non-binding question to the annual election on four one twenty twenty four regarding the preference of potential improvements to the intersection at the four corners, uh, in a sonnet, so Water Street, North Main Street, and South Main Street.
Yep. The, so this is a project, you know, we've been working on because of the issues with the four-way intersection in a sonnet, and we've had, uh, the engineers come back to us saying that the two possibilities will be to do a roundabout or a light, and neither one is a hundred percent ideal, they both have pros and cons to them. We just did a mock, uh, roundabout at the elementary school, and we brought in, uh, the biggest vehicles we had, and I just wanna take a second to thank K R Resendis, who took the time with a, brought their biggest truck they had with a driver, as well as with Rod Resendis and Ross Resendis to maneuver through this mock roundabout to see if it would actually work, because it's one of the smallest ones they've done in the state. And I didn't wanna put this in without making sure it was gonna actually work in the center of a sonnet. So I wanna thank them for their time, and they did that free of charge, uh, to help the town, and also both police chief and fire chief and the, and Neo came with the big fire engine, and he too tried to maneuver through it, as well as Chuck, Chuck was there too, so we did have quite the presentation, but, you know, it's one of those, um, people have really passionate feelings about the four corners and what it should look like, because it's part of the historical, uh, center of town. So some people do not want a streetlight because it's historical, some people do want the streetlight. So, I, I thought it might be, you know, we always struggle to get the information out and get the, you know, get feedback, and so then it's a big surprise when we actually start to work and people then have a lot of comments, so I thought maybe it would make sense to put a question. It will have no validity, in other words, it will just be to get the pulse of what the taxpayers want to see in their town, what they want to spend their money on, both options are around a million dollars. We believe we can get grants for at least half of that, uh, but it will, it will involve taxpayer dollars, and so because of that, and because of the, the fact that, you know, for as many years, as long as we can remember, it's been the four-way four, four-way stop, that four-way intersection, the four corners, that we would get as much input as we can from the taxpayers about what they wanna see. And we're gonna have, um, I don't have a date today, but we are gonna have an information, informational meeting before the election, so sometime in March, so that people can then, um, ask questions, and we'll have the engineers there, like we did before, we did one of these already, but we've gotten more information since that meeting, so that people can come and ask questions and get these pros and cons and both, uh, both uh, fixes for the four-way intersection, and that way, when it comes down to making the final decision, you'll have more of an input of what the public is looking for.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, I, I, Cheryl, I do have some questions for you on this, so.
I don't know if you wanna go first, or if you want me to go first, and then maybe I will answer some of your questions.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you wanna go first, please.
So it sounds like there might be a potential of two. So it sounds like there might be a potential of two questions, not quite sure. I just wanna remind you that they would, for the um non-binding questions, it would have to be a yes or no question. So it can't be like a multiple choice. And the last day for me to receive that question to be placed on the ballot would be Monday, February twenty sixth. So I just heard a date of March, um some informational sessions, I'm not sure if that's.
It's got nothing, yeah.
So I just wanted to go on record, so Monday two twenty six is the last day that I can have the form of question.
Yeah, so I guess, so we we wanna keep the questions like pretty concise, I'm sure too, just like from a ballot printing perspective, right? Like, you know, and especially if it has to be yes, no.
Town council and then there's the MGLs that are associated with that on how the exact specific wording should be and how it has to be. A lot of times with the questions on the ballots, um you know, I hear this from voters all the time, a yes means no and a no means yes. So it would have to be very informative um and get the information out there so that you can get an actual uh correct. Answers or pulse of the community as to what they want, cause a lot of times with those, I would say legalese questions, um it gets quite confusing.
So, you know, I wanted to ask the board if they were inclined to do this. The next one I would do is draft the language with town council and come back for approval from this board for that language and then get it to show for her. Because then there is an opportunity to explain, right? Like in the ballot, it's about.
No, not for, not for locals, so that's the difference between state and general elections. There are no explanations for locals. So again, that's another layer where the confusion comes in. There is no explanation if you don't have informative sessions. If the information is not out, out to the public, they're not gonna get that on the ballot. You can't put any documentation or that little red book that explains that, no.
So that's interesting because if we can't do that, then what's the difference of us even, is it worth us putting it on there? And part of me says yes, because I think most people should be able to read into it as long as we're clear and concise on what we put on there. But if we felt like we needed to get it out to people in order to explain it to them ahead of time. We're not gonna have, this is, there's not another avenue that we're gonna get people to pay attention. The whole idea of this is because we have more people showing up to vote, so we're gonna get to the most people.
And don't forget now too, with that vote by mail for the local town election, those ballots become available approximately three to four weeks before the election. So you're gonna have potential voters by the first week of March already having a ballot in their hand. So are you, you'll have to take that into consideration with your informative sessions, that you have that, you know, because they're gonna get a ballot. And if there's been no informational sessions, they're not gonna be sure as to how they wanna vote or what the question is even about. So that's again, another layer, just to get the dates out there and give you a, an overall perspective of the timeline.
Have you seen this done? Has ha- has the town done in a, in a non-binding question?
Yeah, they've done, they've done non-binding questions before.
What is your sense on how it works, how it works out, like?
Again, it's all, so uh we as the elections office can't um inform the board was one way or another. So that is all the, it's all upon basically administration getting the word out from your office, so.
Done postcards on a lot of other things and they're not really that expensive, so. I think if we can, anything we can do to inform people, it's money well spent, you know, it's not like.
A big decision for the town.
Yeah, it's gonna upset a lot of people no matter what we do.
Consideration though too, you know, normally you have about five hundred and fifty or so voters for an annual town election in recent years. The annual town election, um voters have come out, we're about eight hundred and fifty, that's slowly increased. Now with this vote by mail, obviously, because it is a presidential year, that's gonna increase the number, so if you're looking to put a non-binding question. This is the year to do it, cause you're gonna have all those automatic vote by mail. But um if it's a normal election, you might not have a true sense of the appetite of the community if it wasn't an election year.
Yeah, I mean, I think the other piece of this is people in East Freetown don't necessarily know what we're even talking about.
That's true.
Not gonna lie to you, so I think for me, it was trying, it's just trying to get the, as many people as I possibly can to just.
How you started this too is the, the truest form of it all is a lot of people won't know what's happening. Until they're breaking ground and then all of a sudden they're gonna be upset because there's a light going up. Or they're cutting in and putting in a roundabout and roundabouts don't work, you know, whatever it is, there'll be people who are gonna be unhappy. So let's try and do everything we can to let their voices be heard because we're here for the people, right? It's kind of generic to say that, but it's the truth, right? We wanna do what makes the greatest good, happy for the town that we can, so I.
I can work on that language. I was gonna say, I think I'll work on the postcard too, that's something Lola does a good job on trying to get the prices for us.
Alright, so I didn't even vote on this, I didn't.
I just need to hope that you want me to get that, draft the language and bring it back to you guys.
When you think about it, that's what we're missing, any communication. We have a house in New Hampshire and they have a newsletter that comes out to, you know, every other month. And it's actually a church that does it, but they do, town, the town has a column and. And every, so you know what's going on. And I mean, like we had the villager, I mean. If there was someone that could get a grant for it and and do something, but that's.
The, so the senior center does something, right? And a lot of the seniors love that and that's like, they, they read it, they know when it's coming out and what's in it. And and that's good, so maybe that's something to your point, maybe.
I think they can send it to the state or through some agency to do that, but if there was something we could do as a community. Governments, you know, that's what's missing. We can't assume that everyone's on Facebook.
Yeah, that's the thing, right? Like that's, and it's cheap and easy, but you're right, you can't assume that everyone's on it, um you know, I mean.
That's what's.
Yeah, it's just the, the tough parts of getting, you know, someone has to pull the information, you know, pull the data together, pull, you know, everything and manage it, right?
Along the lines of what Jared was speaking about, possibly putting the informational session on the COA monthly newsletter. You could also utilize, cause that's only one demographic, right? Um if you wanna reach the families, you can go through the school department. Obviously, you can't utilize funds to persuade the voters to vote one way or the other. But you can certainly um advertise informational sessions and you may wanna consider utilizing this.
Yeah, that makes sense.
For that, you'll get a different set of demographics there.
Yeah, I like that.
Cause I think uh Trevor brings up a good point is now we're holding someone else, that we're putting a lot of work on someone else if we're creating that newsletter. I think it, I think it's a great idea to do it. I'm just worried about us doing it and effectively doing it. Because one thing is, is I want, if we're gonna do something, I wanna do it right. I don't wanna say, oh, we're gonna do it and we do good for two months, three months, four months. But then it kinda falls to the wayside.
Might be something to throw out and see if there is any interest in down um for someone doing that. I mean, sometimes someone doing a thesis or someone doing, you know, something on that level.
We don't have the, the, the village voice, we don't have that anymore.
I wish we did. Berkeley has the Berkeley Beacon. I'm like, oh, I wouldn't, too bad we couldn't team up with them.
Alright, so they were good to vote on this and yeah, we'll, we'll have to definitely work on, you know, communicating. So without entertaining motion to add non-binding questions to the annual town election on four one twenty twenty four regarding the preference. Of the potential improvements to the intersection at a sonnet four corners.
A motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor?
Sleckman Zager? Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, now uh Suckin Loops is not here, so I'm gonna do personnel. And Ms. Churchill's here, um so I'm gonna just get right to this one. So I uh, you know, I did my research, um and I obviously saw on the news, you know, a couple of months ago. Uh there was a situation where you entered the school. And you know, that led to, uh you know, I know you were trying to highlight some potential security issues with the school. Personally, I think that was a reckless move. And I, I, so, but I'm gonna give you the benefit of the doubt here, because Carlos is not here, right? It's a three-person board, I know the way I'm gonna vote and if we have a split vote, it's not gonna happen for you tonight. So um I think the, the fair thing to do is to wait until we have three people on the board so that we can have that discussion. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass on this today.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
Um so although I respect and understand your position, you have not um spoke to me at all about what transpired that day. I don't think you have the full um story and I also think you should um touch base with legal. Because if I'm barred from this prior to even going through court and being tried and, you know, we're innocent until proven guilty. So if that is the case, then I will be reaching out to my legal team, because that is not how we run in America. That is not professional, that is okay, you cannot deny me a position because you have part of the story. Which you don't even have the facts correct or even maybe even at all. And that's, that's just pretty upsetting to me, I think, you know, this is me upset.
I, I hear you're saying.
Really suggest you reach out to legal.
This is an appointed position, right? You obviously, you, you, you're, I'm assuming you're gonna run for the election, you can do that, this is a politically, appointed political position.
Do you have any other um letters of interest?
Uh not, not that I'm aware of. I, I just, I think doing my job, I can't in good faith personally recommend someone to which, in my opinion. Showed poor uh judgment in this, and that's all I know about you.
Like I said. I just wish you had the facts.
But.
And then made that decision.
I understand, I understand how you feel about this.
I wouldn't do that to you if you were, you know, had allegations against you, I wouldn't say, you know, he shouldn't have this position.
So, so I, I, I wanna um, I wanna interject on something, so I, I agree. With innocent until proven guilty, right? God bless America, greatest place to live, so um that's all part of it. I don't feel comfortable with a two-person board sitting here. So, so I don't think um, I, I, I don't feel comfortable with us having this decision right now. With two out of the three of us sitting here. So regardless, I, I also would say that we pass on it.
And I, I will mention that the finance committee did give you a rec- a recommendation uh that they, they should give us board and they're, they're entitled to their, their opinions. And that's, that's, that's great, um I, I have no idea what, where Jared or Carlos fall on this decision. Uh that's why just, you know, I have my opinions and, and so. I, and I don't think it's fair for just my opinion to, to, to prevent you from being pointed here. Uh I just wanted to explain why, where my opinions are coming from, um you know, we're all humans, we all have opinions, right?
That's what makes America, I just wanna respect that, I just, I try not to make opinions on anyone or anything unless I have the full, full thing.
Yeah, I, 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 I read what I read, um uh, so that's just my opinion and I'm entitled to it. Um so I'm gonna pass on C and um once Suckin Loops is back, we have a, a full board, then we can, you know, work on a real uh. You can bring this back on the agenda.
January twenty nine, uh January twenty ninth, so next meeting, correct.
Alright, alright, thank you. So with that, so we have uh three other appointments here for election workers and seasonal power operators. So Julia.
Michael Isak.
Thank you. That's a tough one. Election worker unrolled effective one, two, twenty twenty four through eight fifteen twenty twenty four. Cheryl.
Goveya.
Goveya, election worker unrolled effective one twenty, one, two, twenty twenty four through eight fifteen twenty twenty four. And Edward Walsh, uh seasonal power operator effective one, five, twenty twenty four through six thirty twenty twenty four. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to um approve uh the amendments A, B, and D.
Motion made.
I'll second it, all in favor? Aye.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews?
Yes. Alright, and then just Deb, update on the article.
Yeah, so you um, you just voted on um. A point, uh applying twenty five thousand dollars of the federal ARBA money to do the feasibility study. So I gave you guys a printout, so you, you know that ARBA split between Bristol County ARBA and the federal ARBA. Um it's all ARBA, but the way it's handled is differently. So Bristol County ARBA, we got close to one point six million dollars and we have spent. One point four million dollars to date. And it will tell you, we spent money on the water meter project, about four hundred thousand dollars. We spent money on the sewer line engineering, two hundred thousand dollars. We've spent money on the public safety radio project, four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. We have allocated three hundred thousand dollars to the public fiber project. We have spent money on the generator for the water department for uh thirty five thousand five hundred. So that leaves me about two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars of ARBA. Now, ARBA needs to be allocated by June of two thousand twenty four, you can't, you have until two thousand twenty six to spend it. However, the last application took me two and a half months to get it through, so I'm gonna say by March, I need to be getting these applications in. The water department has asked for a tractor to do the water lines or change the water valves, which I think this board has previously approved. They just haven't done it, so that's thirty eight thousand five hundred. And I just got some add-ons to the sewer line engineering extension project in the amount of twenty one thousand dollars. So those are additional applications to the tune of about sixty thousand dollars. And that leaves me a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars of available Bristol County ARBA. Now Bristol County ARBA is the one that needs to be used for water sewer, public safety projects. It also just opened up and said, I think you can use it for roadway projects, so keep that in mind, we have about a hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. I do believe the water department may be coming in to ask for additional funds. But I need to get applications in for this money in the next couple of months, so.
So we couldn't do it even if it's for the roadway, for the roundabout, because we would never have it in time, it wouldn't line up.
Well, we can spend, we have to just allocate it, so the board has to vote, like, we're gonna use this for four-way intersection road improvements. We have until two thousand twenty six to spend it.
If we could line that up, it would, wouldn't that make sense to be? Because then we say, okay, we're gonna, based on the general numbers we got before, it was a million dollars, you said roughly we're gonna spend. You thought we would get about five hundred thousand in grants. If we have extra hundred and fifty grand, that brings us down to the taxpayers only paying three fifty out of pocket. But my other question before that, because I wanna use it on something, is like the fiber project, we have everything kind of. What's requested, do we think that any of those projects are gonna run shy? Cause in today's day and age, we all know that goes, so do we think anything should be updated?
The public fiber project is shy already. Cause this also, don't forget, matches a grant, I get a grant for three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars, so with the two numbers, it's six hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. My approach to that, I do, I am trying to get a meeting set up, is to try to make them come in, in line. I mean, it's a lot of money already we're spending, I feel like there, there'll be pieces we have to change. We, we might have to change the project on some level, but I feel like we've allocated six hundred and fifty five thousand between this and the grant. So, and that's kinda why I've been holding on to the money, because I, I, some of these things, because we have no other funding sources. I wa- you know, I wanted to sit on it, and we still have a little bit of time, but I just want you to be out there thinking about it because we're not gonna let that money go. Um so that's that federal ARBA money, I couldn't grab the fine, the exact number, but it's a part, it was about nine hundred and fifty thousand. But we've invested the money and we've been earning interest, so it's about a million dollars with the interest income that we have. Yeah, and we allocated seven hundred and fifty thousand to the fire station project. To do all the soft costs, the OPM and the architects, now those are under contract for roughly five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. But I did get a grant for fifty thousand dollars of that money, so out of the ARBA money, where, where we need to spend at least five hundred thousand. I'm not gonna change that allocation at this juncture because there may be some change orders coming through. And might change those contracts a little bit, but I believe there'll be residual in what we allocated for the fire station.
Can we change that over?
We can change it, you can reallocate it. The um, you've, you've, you've approved the thirty thousand for me to get some staffing for my office and the accounting office. For the app, all these grant applications, so I haven't, you know, I'm gonna keep that, cause I'm gonna utilize that. And then you just approved twenty five thousand for this um feasibility study. So prior to the twenty five thousand, we have roughly two hundred thousand, we have two hundred and twenty thousand uncommitted, meaning we have it available to you. Now federal ARBA money, unlike Bristol County ARBA, can be used for any town purpose. So anything that you foresee that you wanna spend it on. So I believe with the two hundred uncommitted, it was two twenty, but I'm gonna take twenty five of that. And then that potential two hundred and fifty that we might be reallocating from the fire station, we'd have about four hundred and fifty thousand. I think that we can put a good dent in doing upgrades to the schoolhouse with that money. So I kinda would like to sit there, let's see what this feasibility study shows. And, and what I'm looking for in the feasibility study is, can I get it to be ADA compliant, right? Can I get a ramp, can I get?
No elevator.
No elevator, but can I get a ramp, cause there's a door on the back. There's a door on the back of the building and it's a much higher elevation back there, so can we get it so that we can get ADA compliance? And then the septic system, right? Because Kevin does believe we might be able to get septic, but that's without anybody doing engineering, so we need to really look at that. Because we would be putting bathroom in that building. Um, because we would be putting bathroom in that building. So. We, we, you know, we wouldn't have another building now without running water.
That's a non-starter.
So those are the things the feasibility study will be looking at, but I think they can get, come up to the conclusions pretty quickly. And if, if so, this four fifty could go towards the renovations. Where I'm, I'm guessing, um, with this project, if we keep it in-house, meaning myself and Carl, the building commissioner oversees it. I think we might be able to do quite a bit of renovations for about six hundred thousand dollars. So, um, and if we apply our, our monies, um, again, we're, we're not really going back to the taxpayer. It should be, it should be, um, a short amount and we can do it at the pace we can do it. If we don't have the money, we don't, we don't move forward. But I think we can stop the project with this money anyway.
So it'd be a lot cheaper and a lot faster than us saying to the town we needed new demo.
Right.
Yeah, and like, you know, David and I, we met with, you know, apartment heads and it kinda supposed to went over, you know, just some other renovations we're doing currently at. The town hall, you know, related to the bathrooms and like, you know. It just really, that, that, that conversation was like super, I was really happy I sat in that and kind of was a part of it because you see how like, we're dealing with impossible situations. Right? Where like, you know, we're trying to solve one problem, you're causing two more, right? Just cuz there's just not enough space there, right? And.
I always talk about critical needs, right? I always am trying to address the critical needs. Well, I think this has turned from critical to crisis. And I'm not a person who raises the red flag. It's not my MO. I, I will bend and twist and make things work with what we have. But I am completely out of solutions. I have, I have vetted the school, let's see if they have any space that we could use. They did not. I, I even, we reached out to the food pantry, if they had any extra space that they get, there's no other space. Like I have done my homework to try to come up with, is there something that can be rented that's local to there? There just isn't. It's just nothing. I couldn't, I just couldn't. This is really the only so, short-term solution.
I, sorry to cut in on you, but I thought a lot about this and I was like, you know, cuz the parking, obviously is the one downfall that I can come up with. But, um, the one other thing I thought a lot about was, you know, we, we went to the town and then successfully tried to get. The old tank, right? And one of the issues that we had always thought about was who do we put there because of logistics of working. You know, inter departments or so many departments are working together. Well, the good news is with this being right there, it doesn't matter. We can put whoever there basically and make it work so that, you know, departments can still work with each other. They're only gonna be thirty feet away from each other. It's not that big of a deal if you need to go back and forth.
Same for the residents, right?
And, and exactly, for the residents of, in the confusion of, um, here, oh no, you need to go to our annex. That's, you know, a couple of miles up the road. No, oh, you just gotta go next door, literally next door.
Yeah, I, I think for me, like, you know, I know we talked about using that space a couple of other times and I think the non-starter was always, the reason why I never kinda took the next step is cuz there's no parking. But like, is that really a good enough reason to not utilize that space? Like, it's a, it's a building that's already had work done to it. It's a historic building. It's like right there, like, I don't think that is it now. I'm re- relooking at that. I, I think, you know.
Yeah, and I'm not looking to add staff. I'm looking to just give, 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 I mean, you know, board of health. We have four people working in a twelve-by-twelve office.
Yeah.
They can't even talk on the phone at the same time. It's, it's just, they all do it. They all graciously do it. We all deal with different constraints. We, we, you know, I've said this, well, the clerk with what she's got, I mean, she's sitting on top of ballots in there. I mean, everybody graciously deals with it. But it does become extremely frustrating at times where there just isn't space. So I'm not looking to add offices and add staff. I'm looking to rearrange so that we can move current departments over there. And I don't know what departments, that'll be something we discuss at a later date. So that departments that, you know, can spread out a little bit more within the building. You know, maybe the board of health has splits to two offices and he has a, a health agent and then maybe his, um, staff, his clerk is in a different office. And Hanson, I had my planning office and my clerk was next to me in a separate office. So I don't know, we'll figure that out as we see if it's even usable.
And hopefully it is, knock on wood. And then, you know, handicap accessibility right now, someone who comes in is in a wheelchair. And they need to speak to you guys upstairs. You're, you're having to be called down, right? Shame on us. So this can help level things out hopefully, so to speak, no pun intended, where we can get people, you know, make it a lot easier for people to be able to come.
And with the, and with this, we'll be putting bathrooms in there, probably two, 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 you know, a man and a woman's bathroom. So I think that might help the bathroom issue we're having at the town hall with not really enough bathroom space for everybody. Um, and like I said, there won't be any additional parking that I can see because we're not add, I'm not looking to add staff.
But that point was brought up right to your point is that it's not gonna create more people coming to the town hall. It's not gonna create more staff. So there really shouldn't be more cars. It's just spreading out the people that we have.
Doesn't fix our problem either, but at least.
But hopefully he has a good, I guess, if, if that feasibility comes back and, you know, we can, you know, keep it under. Seven, eight hundred thousand, I'll be happy, really, honestly. Cuz I think we go to the town, ask for some money on this and it shouldn't be this halfway, so.
Yeah, I think so. But that's where you are with opera, so just keep that in mind. Again, it has to be allocated by, now federal opera i- is. Federal opera we already have in our coffers. They sent us the check, right? Sitting there earning interest as I told you. So that's as easy as, you know, June fifteenth, you can allocate what you wanna do with.
And there's no deadline to allocate it.
June thir- June thirtieth of twenty-four, still has to be allocated. You have to say, yep, we're gonna use it. But you don't have to spend it, but that one is just a vote, right? Bristol County is me filing an application and answering a multitude of questions and sending them quite a bit of paperwork and waiting and waiting. It's too long. It, it wasn't in the beginning. Now it's becoming a lot longer of a process. So I'm, I'm thinking by mid-March, I wanna have any final applications into them.
And here's a silly question. We've earned a fair amount of interest. Um, there's no restrictions, anything we have to do with the interest.
So the interest is allocated back to the source. So like I said, the federal opera was nine hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars, I think. But because I invested that or, well, I should say that, uh, the treasurer invested that, um, at, I think it's around four percent. You know, we're earning quite a bit of money there and it's just adding to that account. So there's about a million dollars in there right now, maybe more. I just couldn't grab the latest and greatest before I got here.
Because it's really unrestricted, I guess. My point is, is it doesn't matter. We still just need to make sure we use it on the right stuff. They can't just go back into the general fund.
The interest doesn't go back in the general fund. It stays with the opera monies.
Okay, perfect.
And like, so even like the sewer line, the sewer line, the two hundred thousand, that's matching a grant that I got for eight hundred thousand, right? So I'm using the grant money first. And I invested the two hundred.
So that's sitting, get, yeah, getting a return.
Right.
For as long as possible and then we pull that out when that's smart, that makes sense.
So I, I think there's five thousand dollars in there now, interest. So there's two hundred and five thousand that we can use for this. So I'll be looking at that. So, yeah, I've been working diligently with the treasurer to get, make sure that this money is working for us.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And, and that way we've got more to do. We can do more with the town, you know. That's it. That's all I have for opera.
Alright, I think we'll just ready a sign and then we'll adjourn.
Again, I do wanna shout out to K R Rizendis for helping us with that mock, um, roundabout because it was a little, little chaotic. But Rod, uh, Rizendis, I don't, I mean, he's so, he's, he knows what he's looking at, so he was very helpful.
Interesting, but it is.
This is yours.
Lot of, lot of papers I don't have on.
So you, fire truck cannot go a complete circle. But he said he's never going to do it because he's, he's going to hit the. He's not gonna go around in a circle, right? But, so if he's going self-man, he can make that ninety to forty. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So don't forget, it's a multiple, it's a mountable center. So they get, like, K, K R brought the longest truck he owns. It's low bed, it was long. I don't know how long was that. He util- he had to utilize the whole mill, but he could do it. And, and we knew that. We knew that. It's like it is now. If you watch the intersection, the big truck trailer is coming, they take most, the whole entire road, all lanes. But at least he wasn't going on the other lane, like the surround, the traveling lane. He was just using the middle one. So yes, we tweaked some of the islands, we tweaked things like a fork or two back and we saw where he was going. But yeah, it did work. I'm nice. I'm waiting for the survey. We should, we're having a meeting again next week cuz we have it all surveyed. And I don't, I don't think so.
I wonder if we could do multi-year snowball contracts.
Still get the insurance every year.
Is that, like, the insurance necessarily renewed back? Just cuz I feel like there's a lot of time we spend.
There's a lot of time.
Just on these contracts. It's, it's tougher, you know, than everybody.
You could just vote it with town administrator inside them.
Yeah, that's true. Yep, the snowplows are.
Um, yeah, so I'm excited.
This is all.
For me? Tell you one of my best images ever.
I can promise you something since that.
That was it. Cheryl. Okay, so with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sleckman Zager?
Yes.
Sleckman Matthews.
Yes.